You ready? Good evening. Before we start tonight, Alderman Grady would like to present something for us.
Hello, everyone. I had the opportunity to view what we're just about to see, and maybe some of you have seen it already. It's the back-to-school clip the high school put together, which I thought was very well done, a great sign of the creativity that's coming out of our schools, and I hope you enjoy it.
... That the Jays are the best around in any town. Sweet home, Manassas. Where the Jays are so cool. Sweet home, Manassas. Yes, we're coming back to school. In Manassas, yeah, we love a blue Jays. Ooh, 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 we bleed in silver and blue. A town with great pride and history. Man, this city is so cool, just saying the truth. Sweet home, Manassas. Where the Jays are so cool. Sweet home, Manassas. Yes, we're coming back to school.
Here I come. We love Manassas.
Just do Alt+Tab again, Sam.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Nope, once it, you have to do it again to get it back to the television. There you go. Thank you.
So we have some really talented people at the high school, and thanks to Tom, we got to see it tonight. So thanks for recommending that, Tom. I think it was a really good thing to see. And with that, oh, Tom's gonna turn, Pam's gonna turn the lights back on. With that, I'll call the City of Manassas Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the play of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll call, please.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
Alderman Rapala.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
All are present.
The first item on the agenda this evening is the report of Department Head Staffing Consultants. We have the minutes and communications to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through M and Communications N through R.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Grady. I need to-
I take that as an S.
Yes, there's an S.
There is on my computer, but not on this sheet.
Letters A through S.
Yes, there's A through S.
Right, but I'm saying on the sheet outside, it always said R, that's why. So S is a communication that we have with high strata.
Do you know which one's the missing one? Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor.
Mayor, under item, Sewage Commission, item H, there's talk of a land swap. You were in that conversation, and how would that affect Shepherd Park?
The, if there would be a land swap, it would be an equal amount of land that they would give us and we would give them. So Shepherd Park would maintain the same amount of space, and this is just the beginning talks, if we were even interested, and they would have to also be willing to move the facilities that are in the park, so it wouldn't cost us to do that. So there'll be more information on the Park Board if this does continue to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Yep, that's the one that was missing, and the one that's out in the, out in the lobby. Alderman Sevenick?
Yes, I would just want to follow up with what Alderman Taylor had brought up because that got my attention, too, and for any of those types of conversations, that should, that can only be decided by this body.
Exactly.
So.
I don't know, Director Sackett, would you like to comment on that as well? You're gonna have to pass the microphone back her way.
As the mayor mentioned, this is the early part of the discussion, but is looking to be an equal land swap. There was several different ideas proposed from the Sewage Commission, and the mayor and I have had some preliminary discussions, and we'll just look to continue those. As the mayor said, it would go to Park Board, but ultimately, yes, come to Common Council for final approval, once any details are further, furthered in the discussion.
Okay, my point is you're going backwards. That direction has to start here, even before the Park Board decides to even talk about it. So please, understand that. That angers me. That gets me upset. That, that is not supposed to work in that manner, okay? And Mayor, you should know that, and these, maybe, okay, maybe Nina Manassas Sewage Commission brought it forward to you, but then you should have either made it aware to us as a body that those discussions are being taken place, because I take our property serious. It is one of our main, if not the main responsibility that we have as aldermen, is any type of discussion or selling of our properties, and I don't, and I want it to be open, so the public is aware that, so that this is something that doesn't happen all of a sudden at the last second, and a decision is being made, and then we have people upset because they're losing their park, or losing a building, or whatever. So that has to start here first.
So the first point of discussion, the reason it didn't come to council first, we needed to make it clear to the Sewage Commission that we were not going to be swapping land and incurring expenses as a city. And that was kind of the first discussion, we should just swap land, and then we should build our new facilities there. We didn't want to bring it to the council until we knew if they were willing to rebuild the facilities in the new portion of the park, and we still don't know that yet. So that's where we're sitting. Once we know if they're willing to rebuild those facilities, then it would come back to the other boards.
And as you know, and the rest of this body, is that we have that property, that home over there.
Exactly.
And they're not interested in a pilot program, but they're, we're interested in growing out in Harrison, we're interested in growing Fox Crossing, but yet they want to continue to take property taxes away from the city of Manassas, which isn't fair. Those were our growth areas, they're no longer our growth areas, and now we are boxed in. And that's why I take this strong of a position, because if you think that you're gonna grow and be a big boy, then you're gonna have to jump through the loop, the hoops like the city of Manassas and Nina had to.
I agree with you, and that's why we made it perfectly clear that we weren't going to just give them property, or incur costs to do this.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we have an opportunity here. I noticed in the minutes also stated that they're gonna re-rate the plant for capacity, and I think we're going the wrong direction as far as going to the Shepherd Park side. We should be going south, and we should be crossing Abbey Avenue into the city of Nina. The city of Nina has a vast amount of property to the southwest, hundreds and hundreds of acres that they're gonna put houses into, to that developments, and also Town of Harrison, Village of Harrison, they're putting 600 apartments in as we speak, and this is all gonna add to capacity, to expansion of this plant, and as Alderman Sevenick said, I think it's the wrong direction as far as when it comes to Shepherd Park. Let's start pushing over into Nina and see how they like it, and then when they're taking their tax base away, see how they like it, because right now, they don't care when they take our tax base away, and, and as Alderman Sevenick said, our growth area is now closed because they became villages, and it was on their actions that they became villages and stopped our growth, even though that we're the ones that put the infrastructure out there years ago. So here's an opportunity, I think, to steer them south, and also look for a pilot program. If they're gonna keep using our, our property and taking away our, our housing, they won't have it for a minute. Fox Crossing, Harrison, we're not put up with that for one minute, and why should we? And here's an opportunity where, where we can make a stand on this, and if Alderman Sevenick needs to bring it back to the council for a resolution, or, or how we want to structure this expansion of the plant, so be it. Thank you.
And again, we're not offering to give them any land. In fact, we said it had to be an equal swap if we were going to do this, and it had to benefit both us and them. This is not- And we've also made that clear, and that has not been something they're agreeable to, and that's why we told them that we would not allow them to expand their footprint if that was the case. So. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Ted.
Thank you. Mine is on letter Q, the Strong Neighborhood Program update. Sam, I'm just curious as to the policy that we have in there on extensions. I mean, I know with COVID and other things that did happen, some of the people that applied for certain programs couldn't get contractors, couldn't get certain things. So I'm just kind of curious as to what's the stipulation to make you vote, say, okay, you can have an extension, or maybe you can't have one. Is there anything, or?
So we have, basically, like you had stated, within the program, it states substantial completion of the project is to happen within six months. There are certainly larger projects, you know, full rehab, where it's going to be a lot longer to do. Over the course of this past year, you had mentioned it right on the head, getting contractors or materials with COVID has been, has been an issue, so we have brought some of those extension requests forward to the Housing Authority for their consideration. Basically, at this stage, we have left it to them for their discussion and consideration. At our last meeting within the Housing Authority, we did discuss bringing forward more, stronger guidelines potentially for the upcoming year to be considered at the Common Council. The Housing Authority did request, you know, some, some further guidance on that, basically to, to state how the council would like to officially handle those with more, more criteria behind them.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So that will come on a future agenda.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no, no one else, if we could, we don't need a roll call, all those in favor? We're, we're past that now. We're, James, we already took a vote on this, so we can't go back. You need to bring up your discussion before we take the vote.
James, you, later on on the agenda, there's discussion about the, some of the police, or, I mean, the fire issues, you could probably bring your question up then. That way, I mean, the mayor is right, we did go through this, but you'll be able to ask that.
Item F is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? If you could come up to the microphone, please.
Can I take this off, please?
Sure.
Ernie Collier, 941-
You can keep your glasses on, Ernie.
Yeah, 941 Tappan Street. Hold on, I'm gonna get you now. You should be ashamed of yourself. We had a, the council appointed a committee with any, for any discussion in anything with the Fox Crossing, with properties, there was three aldermen, yourself, the attorney, and the accountant at those meetings, it was at, right down the street, and for you, even as saying this is possible, or we'll talk about it, you should have said, I can't talk about it, it's gotta go to the council, and if they want to talk about it, they'll get another committee and they'll look at it. When we were on there last time, the arbitrator said they will not budge on nothing, you're wasting your time, and they did not, they were, they weren't gonna give us nothing. I don't care for them, I don't trust them, and I think you guys have the right to have a council committee of six people like we had before, see if they want to trade and make trades like we wanted last time, and if not, don't do nothing for them, and don't do nothing with them, because you can't trust them, their past should say it all. The other thing, I was hoping I could have got your attention for Housing Authority. Thank you, I'm a member of the Board on Housing Authority. I was hoping I could change my vote from last meeting. If I would have changed my vote, there would have been discussion, and I have nothing against the family or the, the party that wants to have their thing extended or promoted, but I'd wanted teeth and everything from there on, and I thought it would have included that, that, so if I can change my vote, I know I'd have a discussion, and my discussion would change it and table it until it was, it would be resolved, and the party would still be able to come forward. All it comes down to is information on what they're getting and what they're doing and where the money's going. It's not, it's not, it's not a Ponzi scheme for somebody. You just don't come in there with a sheet with a handwritten, with a contractor that can't even find. I'd like a little better information before I give $15,000 away. They're gonna get their money, they just gotta come with the right documents. It shouldn't start two months, or four months, or six months, it should have started, and we should have had a table. I misunderstood something there, so I'm asking for you to change my vote, so I can talk about it at the next meeting, put everything on stall until then, and I want to remind you, you guys have done this only once in a blue moon, but the last time you did it, it was when you started the program for $15,000. It was 5-3, then it went to 4-4, and then you passed the vote, Don. So I'm asking for your help on this. I think the person involved would say fine, because they're gonna come through with information anyway, but I just think we should have that right. Thank you for your time.
So the way to accomplish that, Mr. Collier, is to ask the chair to put that on the agenda to be reconsidered, and he could do that if he wished to do that.
It was tough to get a hold of the chair, because in your blue book that I have, you have the wrong number in it, and it took me about four days to track him down.
Okay.
But I wanted to bring it to your, to the council, that I'm, I'm not trying to stop nothing, I just want to make sure everything's fair and upfront.
Okay.
And if we can't do that, then we shouldn't have you talking to the, because that's not fair and upfront. I don't want nothing done here or there, I want it done where you follow A, B, C, and D, and then good, you sign off. We don't have that all the time here, and then it causes some dissension. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
It's okay to remove this, too, to talk?
Sure. And if we could get your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Robert Burke, 2509 Gosling Way, Manash, of course. I'm here, because there's a proposal, I believe, for the fourth development agreement between the city of Manassas and the Woodlands Development. Not sure who still owns it, but at the time when I bought, Mike Hagan sold me my land, and over the years, and I brought with me, I don't know, I didn't have enough to give everybody, but I certainly can give some of you some documents and go through to show you exactly what has happened since I have purchased my land, and the things that he has lied to me about, or I'll just provide him a copy with you, and I'll just go through them quick. So when I purchased it originally, I grew up out here, you might be familiar with the Weborg family, they were the only ones that owned a property out there, and we used to jet ski, swim, all those things. So when I bought, I asked Mike about that, and he, of course, said that would be fine. He also went on to tell me that if I was to buy a lot, the south side of that land would never be developed, it wasn't buildable, so I would always have this wildlife property out there of sorts, which to me was part of why I bought. The other thing that he told me, and this is stuff I have documented with the DNR and the engineering firm, that's what the papers are, that I could pretty much do what I wanted, because I had two young daughters at the time, so I was gonna run concrete down there, build a fire, a fire pit and all that stuff, but before I did that, after I purchased, I thought I better just check with the DNR, because I know a lot of times they regulate, and I found out at the time, one pond was regulated by them, one was not. But anyway, so I had correspondence with Christine Holt, Van Holt, the DNR, in 2016, and she told me right out that my land was, and part of it was wetland. Now, I also have in this paperwork disclosures from Mike Hagan stating, as a broker, there is no wetland on my land. So I dug deeper, and I actually got from an engineering firm, the actual study that was done, that shows, they call it a meandering line, and they sent me a copy of that, showing that a third of my land was wetland, and then it went on to say that, the DNR said, we're sorry, but you can't do anything on that land, but really mow it. You can't even till it or plant grass or anything, which I've never done, although most neighbors have, and no one's ever questioned it, I haven't, because I was aware of the situation, and once I was aware of it, obviously, I can't cross those boundaries. So now, as I find out from my neighbors, they are developing that land across from me, the land that I, you know, where I built, pay a lot of tax money, I also own a lot of other things in the city of Manassas, and I, I develop them, and I, I pay a lot of money in taxes, and that's why I chose to live here, that now Mike's decided he's gonna sell it, and they're gonna put a bunch of houses up there. And he told not only me, the same story, he told every neighbor that he sold those lots, that was one of the big selling points. You're gonna have this beautiful view all the rest of your years, nice woods over there, I mean, in the mornings, the herons fly in, the egrets fly in, and now that's all gonna go away. Another thing that has been an ongoing problem, which a new development is gonna create, and the existing one they are putting in, and I have pictures as well, if I want, if you want to see them, whenever they're building a home, a lot of them that he builds, when it rains, it runs off and it is filling up that pond. That pond cannot support more and more building. I mean, this year, within two, three weeks of the heat, it was nothing but algae and like a cesspool, instead of this beautiful pond that I once lived on. So this whole thing is just, it keeps going on and on and on, and at this point, I'm ready to take legal action to stop this. So I'm asking, I don't know much about this stuff here, I'm asking you, as members of the community, that probably are aware of his shenanigans, because I did some more research on him, that he is always pulling something, and at the cost of us, that paid a lot for those houses and lots. So I don't know if anyone wants a copy of this, because everything I said here is kind of documented.
We could take a copy for the record and-
Okay.
And give it to the rest of the council member, if you'd like.
Okay, all right. Well, that's all I had to say, if anyone has any questions of me.
You can give it to the clerk, and then if you need your copy back.
No, I have three of them, I just didn't know what. This is a rare thing for me here, so. Anyway, that's my big concern at this point.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And I can, if you just want to hand it to me, I'll hand it to the clerk, and I'll, I'll get it out to the rest of the-
I mean, three, so maybe you want one in the court.
Actually, if you want, I'll take the colored one, we'll scan it, and we'll send it out to everyone. Okay?
Mayor, before we continue, the agendas outside are completely grouped up. Unless I got a bad copy here, nothing for the consent agenda, or anything else at all.
You're right. That's because his mic wasn't on. The agendas that are out in the lobby are not right, they're missing a page. Do you want to, Cam, would you be able to run up and print some for us? Well, we'll continue, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Corey Simon, 2517 Gosling Way. I'm here for the same reason, on the fourth development of the agreement. When Stan started talking, I couldn't agree more with him, that there is a process that the city has to do, and when I go through the bylaws of what the city did, and that went through the Planning Commission last week, you guys broke the law, or not, maybe not your law, but you guys did not send out any of the notifications that were supposed to be to the, the, within 100 feet. Let me just see if I can read this, so. So if you go into Article K of your bylaws, 13-1-40 authorization, or authority, and you can go all the way down to 13-1144, there are many things that are in here, but the- There are many things that are in here, but the city clerk was supposed to send anybody within 100 feet. Notification within seven days, which was not. And so, whatever happened at the, the planning commission cannot go through. So, if you guys are making a decision tonight, 100% cannot go through. The statue of, the Wisconsin statue is in here. None of us were notified. We can't even file our protest, which would make two-thirds of the, or excuse me, three-quarters of the vote to pass it, because we don't know how much 20% of the vote would be, or 20% of the people that can sign a petition to pass this through. So, I don't know how it could ever have gone through. I mean, I'm pretty upset right now about it. I mean, two months ago, I came in here and I talked about this, and we're way far, you guys said that we were, this was just in the development stages, the next day, my wife calls the planning, or planning department, and found out that they've been in talks for a long time. If I go and pulled the, the application, I guarantee that they did not do the application by what your bylaws are in the code here. Both Mike Hagan firm would have to. The development that is trying to go through, which is ABG, which is Atkins Building Group, they would have had to notify the city clerk with the names of the people that are in that area, within that 100 feet, which I guarantee that he did not. And then the city clerk has to, within seven days of notifying of a hearing of the planning commission, should've sent out those, so we could talk to them. So, if there is any way, shape, or form that this goes through, I just would not believe that we would not, as a city of Manasha, follow the rules and the regulations that we put in place. There's no way it should've went through, none. My wife called, talked to you guys last, last week, and no, not one person acknowledged her, basically, on what she talked about. So, I'm, I'm really upset about this. I would recommend that all of you, where's the city attorney, I don't see her.
We just sent her upstairs to make some copies, unfortunately, but.
Okay, but I, I would recommend that you actually, the thing about it is, is if it's gone through like this now, it's happened in the past. And you, I mean, you guys are the ones that make the laws. I mean, and if you're, I mean, you guys have to follow the laws better than the residents. How are we supposed to follow the laws if you guys don't follow them?
And I'll, I'll have Director Schrader talk about the process. I think, I was looking for where you were, and I think what you're talking about is rezoning.
Yeah, and that's what you guys are doing, you guys.
That is not happening tonight.
Okay, when is that happening, then? But it should've been before it even passed the planning commission last week, because it went through. We were supposed to be notified, and it didn't.
So, we'll talk about the process when we get to the agenda item. We don't typically have discussions here.
I mean, no matter what, though, it should have to go back to the planning commission.
It will, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Melanie Simon, I live at 2517 Gosling Way, Manasha, as well. I don't have anything prepared, so hopefully, what I say will make sense. But like some of the others that have talked about tonight, my husband and I, Corey, whom you just heard talk, we purchased our lot on Gosling Way in 2008. Like some of the others you've heard talk, we were assured, and it was one of the driving factors in us purchasing our lot, that the land across from us would not be built upon, because it was wetlands. If you talk to anybody that lives on that pond, they will tell you they were told the same thing when they purchased those lots. As he mentioned, we feel, as a neighborhood, we've been really left out of the loop in the process of what's been happening. We actually only found out about this potential development, because I happened to talk to someone outside of the construction trailer a few months ago, and happened to see that there were approximately 110 houses that are being proposed. Very few of our neighbors were, even as we've talked, we do have a petition started. Very few are still aware of what's going on. We've been trying to get that out there, but there really just seems to be a lack of transparency and a lack of communication within the community. I did go to the planning commission last week, I will say it was disappointing. I went, I provided some background, and there was absolutely no discussion based on what I had, had said. And so, it kind of felt like, right, you're one of our residents, this is clearly a hot-button issue for you. Clearly, you have a neighborhood that's not felt like they've been communicated to, and there was absolutely zero acknowledgement of that. So, I am asking, before this gets further down this path, that there is more involvement from the residents of that neighborhood, and there is an acknowledgement that all of us purchased our lots under a certain guise. We believe ethically and legally, there are concerns if the developer and the city choose to move forward, knowing that you have a large number of people that were assured there would not be development on that particular, in that particular area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? Seeing no one else, we'll move on. Did everyone get a updated agenda? The agenda that's on the website is correct. So, just so everyone in the audience knows, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Sevenek?
Mayor, the reason I did this is because we have people in the public that this may be their first council meeting, and they're given an agenda that makes no sense.
No, that's fine.
So, that's why I wanted to make sure they had that, and so that they are able to follow through. So, we have now available for you the updated agenda that was, like the mayor said, on the website. Just happened to be that probably while they were printing them, one of the pages got deleted. So, with that, Mayor, we are now on the consent agenda. And I would like for us to remove items. Is that what you're requesting at this point?
Please, yep.
Item two. Item five. Item six. Item seven. Eight, nine.
Is that it?
Well, I might as well say 10 also, seeing that, you know, this has been, well.
Do we just want to take them all individually?
Yes, let's do that, Mayor.
She'd like.
I'll do that.
Does anyone object to taking them all individually? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the minutes to approve from 8:16? Yes?
We already finished that.
Yes.
There is an area at the end of the meeting for you to do that again. At this time, Mayor, I'll move that we approve the common council minutes of 8:1621.
Is there, there's a second by Alderman Ted Grotty? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Mark, you're up.
Item two is a payment to Northeast Asphalt, is there a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Like to make the motion to accept the payment to Northeast Asphalt Inc., contract unit number 2021-10, street, for the street construction and rehabilitation in the amount of $142,465.45, payment number two.
Is there a second? Is a motion and a second by Alderman Nichols? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item three is the city of Manasha Complete Streets Policy, do we have a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor, make the motion to accept the city of Manasha Complete Streets Policy.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Nichols? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item four is filling of the deputy chief position? Is there a motion? Alderman, oops, I'm sorry. Alderman Repella?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to not allow, disapprove the deputy chief position as soon as possible, please.
So, you'd like a motion to not?
To not, to deny.
To deny filling the deputy chief?
Yes, I'd like a motion to deny it.
So, motion and a second, is there discussion? Did you want to discuss something already?
Yes, yes, definitely. The reason that I'd like to deny this deputy chief position right now is because, I hate this mask, is because we've set up boundaries for our city of 20 miles that a administrator needs to live within. And currently, one of the persons that they're planning on hiring lives 45 miles away. And it completely goes against any type of rules that we've set up. We can't get city elected officials to, you know, live within 20 miles, now we're going out 45 miles. So, this is supposed to be somebody who's supposed to be able to come and help out at a drop of its, drop of a hat in 45 minutes, then plus him getting changed into his gear, he could be there within an hour. We need to be strong and support this as far as the denial, because 45 miles is not 20. And I'm not in favor of following, you know, I'm in favor of following our 20-mile rule. So, I need some help, and I want, I'd like to deny it, and those are my reasons why.
Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. Here's where I come in on this particular issue. I chaired the committee of the Nina-Manasha Joint Finance Committee, and I voted for this. But recently, reading our minutes, it appears that the other Nina-Manasha Fire, Joint Fire Commission has decided to change the rules in the middle of the game. I don't like that. Staff here in the city of Manasha already know my position about residing and where you reside. We're lucky if we have a half-full, a handful of people who work for our community that live in our community. And that has, and that's no secret where I stand on that. I am bothered by that. I was in favor of this position, I am not now, because you changed the rules. And in the city of Nina, they can have their rules, in Manasha, we have ours. And if one community says yes, and the other says no, it fails. It seems to me as though, instead of looking for a qualified candidate, we've already decided who this person is going to be without interviews by changing the rules in another committee. So, therefore, tonight, I'm not 100% opposed to the position, but I am opposed to the process. And therefore, this evening, I will vote no, and I would ask my colleagues to do the same, to send a message to the city of Nina that we are not interested in hiring people 50 miles away or further. If they can't live in this city, they don't need to work here.
Alderman Langdon?
I think Ted was up next. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, I have a question for Chief Clone. So, two weeks ago, at our little get-together that we had at the fire station, I asked, we talked about it, you, me, and Victor, and, and both of you mentioned to me that you had a couple of good in-house persons that you were looking at, I was wondering what happened to that.
I have no idea who's even gonna apply at this time, so I'm not sure what person is being referred to as getting the job, because it hasn't even been posted yet. Yes, we do have two or three qualified people within our organization that would be able to take over this position. However, it's gonna be open to anybody on the outside of the department as well, once it, if it gets posted. So, we do have two or three qualified people for this position.
So, this position hasn't been posted yet?
Correct.
And no interviews done, then?
Correct.
And so, this person from Clintonville isn't being, is not being hired?
Well, he's already here, he's our fire marshal and our fire prevention chief, so. But there's been no applications for applying for this position.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, before we move forward, do you want to tell us a little bit about the process, what happened at the fire commission, and what everyone's talking about here?
Sure. So, during the fire commission meeting, it was brought to our attention that somebody within emergency management with the city of Manasha's policies has to live within, I believe it was 20 miles within the city border. So, the fire commission was concerned that, depending on who put their application in, we may not get anybody to apply. So, that's kind of how that got started, and it was worded to have myself be the emergency management or a designee. So, that's kind of where that came from, or how that started, was in the fire commission area. So, there was nothing changed about somebody being able to get here in time. All our staff are trained in emergency management, and so, but that's kind of the, the background of how this came about.
Thanks. And I'm gonna let Ted and James and Becky go, and then the attorney would like to speak as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Chief, also, you know, I too serve with the, on the commission of Nina-Manasha Fire Joint Rescue with Alderman Repella and the chair, Alderman Sevenek. And we had our meeting, and we discussed this position. And here, now is the first time I'm hearing about, the guy's been hired already, and I think some of us up here are putting the cart before the horse. And I would trust, you know, Chief Clone, he knows the guidelines and what has to be done. And to have a chief outside that boundaries, that candidate should not be able to apply. And I don't know if this can come back to the Nina-Manasha Joint Fire Rescue Committee before it goes back on this docket again. I mean, I don't want to cause confusion and disarray over something that hasn't even happened yet, and it, it might not. So, I'm just, just stating my points here, and just before we get too overboard on this.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we all know that we had a 20-mile limit for the community. Alderman Sevenek has brought it up many, many times. And I think it's very generous. There's a lot of area within 20 miles of the Manasha that's, before you had to live in the city, before the state of Wisconsin changed some laws. And as I heard from the people of Woodland Hills tonight, we have laws on the book that said they have to be notified before a meeting. And we know that with, what those rules are, and they should be followed. And our 20-mile limit should be followed too by this body. And I, I didn't see anybody changing this law ahead of time, and saying we need to go out 25 miles or 30 miles. So, this is what the Manasha ordinance is, and, and we should abide by that at this, at this time. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I've read the minutes that are in my packet, which include the minutes from the Joint Finance and Personnel Committee meeting on August 24th. And I happen to have two copies of the Joint Fire Commission meeting from August 25th. So, if there was another meeting that I'm not aware of, then I, I don't know. But I'm not seeing anywhere in the minutes I have that a rule's been changed or a decision's been made. In fact, what I'm seeing is that the job isn't posted yet, and then it will be posted both internally and externally for three weeks. So, that's the information that I'm making a decision with tonight. Apparently, there's something that needs to be cleared up here, and I would like that to be cleared. And I would like that to be cleared up. And possibly for the attorney, my question would be, is any of this outlined in the merger agreement as to how the position would be filled and what the requirements are for emergency management?
That's a perfect segue to attorney captain. And she was going to go on by self, okay?
Yep, it's on. So, first of all, when we're talking about, is it legally possible to require employees to live in the city of Minasha? The answer is no. Doesn't matter how many times you say it. You want people to live in the city of Minasha. There is, it is prohibited. You cannot require employees to live in the city of Minasha. So, it would be probably prudent, if you want employees who do a good job, to stop saying that, because it's very insulting to those employees who are dedicated to working at the city of Minasha. And to think that just because they don't live in the city of Minasha means that they're going to work any less professionally for the city of Minasha. Excuse me, Your Honor, do I have the floor?
Unless you have a point of order, she has the floor.
Sure, I'll make a point of order.
What is your point of order?
Excuse me, you're going beyond point of order. He's going beyond the point of order.
And I would agree that we should.
It is illegal to think that you can require employees to live in the city of Minasha. Yes. What I heard is a statement that you have to live in the city of Minasha. That's what you want. And so, excuse me.
Excuse me, the attorney has the floor at this point?
The other thing is, the city of Minasha has a contract with the city of Nina with respect to the fire department. In that contract, it identifies employees to be those of the city of Nina. They have, and this was well before my time, they have been following the rules, whatever those rules are, with respect to residency or any other employment matters, according to being employees of the city of Nina. If you would like that changed, that is something that you would have to bring up and reopen the contract. You cannot change that unilaterally. With respect to filling positions, it's the exact same thing. The common council does not fill any positions, fire department positions. They don't fill the, decide who are going to be police officers either. There is a statute.
I think what we're discussing is filling the position, so I think that her.
Correct, yes. And the filling of positions is done by the commission. So, it isn't anything that would be coming back to the city of Minasha or city of Nina to fill, or to put a particular person in that position. That's done by the commission. And as I mentioned, they would be following whatever rules are set up with the city of Nina, because some years ago, that is what the city of Minasha decided.
It's my understanding, though, that both common councils have to give authority to fill those positions.
They give authority to fill the position, that's correct. So, if there is, if you don't want that particular position, you know, you're going to eliminate that position, or, you know, there's budgetary concerns, et cetera. And, you know, it's more prudent not to fill a position for a particular period of time that would likely be the occasion when you, you know, would not want a position filled. So, those would be the usual reasons. I'm sure there are others. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I'd like to comment as well. Well, you'll be the next person. You get to speak once. I just want to make it known that my concern is that this is an emergency management position. And that person needs to be able to respond in a reasonable amount of time. That's my concern. And what happened was, the job description was changed to now have the chief be the emergency management person for both communities. I don't think that's prudent. So, as the attorney was saying, we could do a couple of things. We could deny the position. We could also send this back to the fire commission and ask them to listen to our concerns about response times. Or we could deny the position if we wanted to as well, or approve it. And I'll leave it at that. Attorney, attorney. Alderman Sevanik.
Freudian slip. I'm more than a 30-year veteran up here. I think I know the rules of whether a person has to live here. I knew the rule of 20 rules, or 20 miles, excuse me. Mayor put it perfectly. This issue is about the fact that the person that's being hired also acts as the emergency manager. And in that position, that manager had to live within a certain range in Minasha's rules, which means 20 miles. What that commission decided to do, Alderman Nichols noted that, wait, I haven't even found this out yet. And she's right, they had a special meeting to change the rules of the game. So, what they thought, how can we do this? I know, we'll give that responsibility to the chief, and then we can hire whoever we want who lives outside the area. That type of management I don't like. And that's why I'm objecting. I voted for it in committee, as it was proposed. They changed the rules, is what I'm saying. I'm sorry if you didn't like my comments about city employees living here. I understand that, because most of you don't. We just watched a video of people being very proud of living in their community. I take that to heart. I've lived here my whole life. I know some of the people in the gallery here have lived here a good part of their life also. I think it's important to live in your community. That's my personal opinion, has nothing to do with the law. So, my objection and my agreement with partially what Alderman Repella is asking this evening is to, at this point, deny the position. I think it might even be better, as the mayor suggested, send it back to committee, but I don't think that's going anywhere. So. I guess it's something I'll have to talk to the chief about, as far as how we put this maybe back on the agenda for discussion, because if this evening, if we go along with this, they're not going to have this position. And by saying, we don't have a say in the matter, we definitely have a say in the matter this evening. And part of that reason is, we got to stop bending the rules for individuals and bending the rules that we're supposed to be abiding by, and that was the 20-mile radius. And that's where I object. So, I'm going to be voting along with Alderman Repella on this matter.
Alderman Grati.
Thank you, Mayor. I too am in the camp with Alderman Nichols, saying we don't have any documentation about hiring somebody that's out of this radius. Chief Clone always just stated, the job has not yet been posted. We don't know who might apply. I don't want a denial of a fire chief position. That means we'll never have that fire chief position filled. Their deputy, I'm sorry, deputy position filled. And I don't know how much clout we have in Minasha, because if you read bullet point number five up there, Minasha's only 40%. So, we can't deny a deputy chief. If Nina agrees with it, they're still going to have that conflict. So, the best thing to do is send this back to committee, if we can somehow, and work this out. With the application that you're applying for, these are the credentials you have to fill. And if you're out of that 20-mile radius, you can't apply for it. But let's not just deny this position tonight.
Not sure who is next. Alderman Langdon, I think, was next.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I think to be in good faith, I would be in favor of sending this back, because it still has to come back to us for a vote. It's still, it has to.
The chief can then hire the person.
If we send it back to committee, then it would come back to us again.
It has to. That's what I'm saying. If we send this back to committee, it has to come back to us. All right?
Mark, what I was just asking the attorney was, does it go back to Joint Finance and Personnel, or does it go back to fire commission? It could go to either one or the other, or both, depending on what you guys would like to do.
What I would like to do is, because I don't know who changed the rules, I would like to have the names written down, who changed the rules on this. And I want this sent back to them, knowing that we know that they fudged the rules. And I want names to come back on the next agenda on who was on that committee. I want to know who. We have that right as a council to know who changed the rules. I don't.
So, and I guess we should clarify that no one changed the rules, no one fudged the rules. They changed the job description, is what they did.
To?
The job description.
Why did they do that?
And I can't speak for them as why they did that, but the job description was changed for both the chief and the deputy chief.
In a special meeting?
And we don't have the minutes for that meeting here.
Okay. And I won't approve anything without reading minutes from that meeting, so, okay.
Just to be clear, no one changed rules. They changed the job description.
They changed job descriptions.
Yes.
Are we, could we postpone this? Would that overrule Alderman Repella's motion for postponement till the next meeting to get the answers that Alderman Langdon's looking for?
Yes, you can postpone, and that would take precedence.
Yes, I'm sorry. You still wanted to talk, I won't, okay, go.
And referring would also take precedence, right? Referring to a committee would also take precedence over the current motion. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. And just a couple of questions to clarify some information here. The, what I'm hearing is the job description was changed at a special meeting. Was that a special meeting of the fire commission? Okay. Attorney Captain, would this 20-mile radius that some members are passionate about hold up under employment law? If it continued to be requested as a requirement of hire?
It would be the city of Nina's rules. So, if they required that, yes, because the statutes do allow consideration for emergency personnel to live within a certain distance of the community for which they serve.
Okay, so then I, as a person outside of the city of Nina, I would be curious as to whether or not the policy is consistent across all employees, or if it was changed just for this situation? Or an exemption was carved out for the situation? And we don't know, but that's the question that I would just have. And either, probably Chief Clone could answer this question. Is the position of deputy chief outlined in the merger agreement?
I believe the table of organization is part of the merger agreement, so that position is in the table of organization.
Okay, thank you. So, there's a couple of things that we have to keep in mind as we move forward. I'm comfortable sending this back to fire commission, so that at least we have an opportunity to express our grievances here and see if they, you know, can find a way to a compromise. Attorney Captain, could, would a simple motion to refer back to committee supersede the motion that's on the floor?
Yes.
Great, then I'll move to refer this back to the fire commission.
Alderman Nichols, do you want it just to the fire commission, or the fire commission and joint finance?
Since the fire commission is doing the hiring.
It's fine either way.
Then I'm good with the fire commission.
Okay, so there's a motion to refer to the fire commission? Is there a second? It's a motion and a second? That does supersede the motion that's on the floor right now? Did you want to discuss sending it back to the fire commission?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
I'm still voting to deny this, and I, in, I'm trying to recruit you guys to join me. And the reason I am, because I can't trust the fire commission, because they didn't tell us about the change of job description. There were no minutes given. It was a secret meeting.
Was not a secret meeting.
Well, a meeting that we didn't know about. And these are the city of Nina rules. The one thing we have that's consistent is us being able to stop this position tonight. And then, if they want, they can go back and try to get the position back in. But if we don't stop it tonight, and we send it back to committee, somehow I just don't trust them. And hate to say that, but I'm pleading with you to vote to deny tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so what's, Alderman Sevanik?
Sorry, Mayor, I guess I have to say something.
I was just going to tell them what was on the floor, so.
You really, I mean, you really can't say you don't trust them. I trust them. We don't get a phone call on every meeting either. But it does seem that they were being, they were just trying to be accommodating. And maybe to get a person they strongly believe in. And I'm okay with that. But what I'm not okay with is the fact that the timing here was just a little too fast. And I think that the commission does a very good job. And I agree with Alderman Nichols that they need to know that we're not necessarily happy about changing the job description just to accommodate a boundary line. That's what this is doing, and that's what makes this suspicious. So, I think that would be the best communication here tonight, not just to throw it under the bus, but to keep this open and to make certain that this commission understands that we have a rule here in Minasha, it's 20 miles. Nina's might be different. But despite us having a 60-40 split, Alderman Taylor and I were the only two that were around at the time when this was voted on, and we have a 50-50 stake in this, no matter what. It isn't about how much you pay in, it's about sharing a fire. It isn't about how much you pay in, it's about sharing a fire department, which we agreed to do, to try to save taxpayers' dollars for both Nina and Manasha. So, I would encourage the vote for Alderman Nichols' motion and then therefore we can get this resolved the way hopefully we can and that they understand, I mean, look at how much time we spent on this, that we're not all right with this at this point and we want to be. So, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. And at that time, at the marcher, we were told that we didn't want to eliminate any jobs, but as we would pare it down, especially with the deputy chiefs' positions, as people retired, we would assign different workload to different people. So, I haven't seen that yet. And also, you don't realize what runs through Nina every day almost constantly on the rail system. And to have a catastrophic, catastrophic event there would affect both our communities. And that's why we need response time with people. It's not for their convenience to live in Clintonville or Marinette, whatever. It's, it's the responsibility to the community that we have. And we all want a firefighter. We used to say, the bell goes off, they slide down the pole, they get their boots on, they go into the truck and out the building. And that's what we expect. And I think we respect that from our emergency committee to, to, to get together in a timely fashion. I was told one time, if you knew what, what went through Nina constantly every day on the rail system, it turned your hair gray and that's what happened to me. They told me what, they told me what goes through Nina every day and I had brown hair and it turned gray on the moment, so. But it's a, it's a serious, serious position that we have to take. And we all thought that a 20-mile limit was a timely, timely, miles away from the city to respond. Thank you.
So, we're talking about sending this back to committee right now, Mark?
Yep, yep. So, I would just like to say, Alderman Repella, I hear what you're saying and want. We can, we're voting on sending this back to committee and, and, and just want to let you know that's what I am in favor of because this has to come back to us. And we could, at that time, eliminate the position if we wanted to. But I think it's only right that we send it back to these, all these people and let them know that this council, most of us, are not very happy how this was done. And, 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 and I want them to, to know that. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion on the floor right now is to send this to the fire commission? If we could have a roll call vote, please? Oh, yeah. Deputy chief. It does say deputy, the agenda. She's going to fix it. Yeah, we want to see how Stan voted first before we go on. Or did it show?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, one.
Okay, item five is the cost distribution for the fire department. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that the proposed cost distribution formula for the City of Nina's share and the City of Manasha's share be approved. That is 60.64 percent for Nina, City of Manasha 39.35.
So, motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Discussion, Alderman Taylor?
And I know this came up a couple of years ago to look at this formula and I think the formula is somewhat skewed and I'll have to bring up some information to help change this next time. But you look at our industrial area, looking across the river here from Bontas to Gilbert's to Graphic Packaging to International Paper, Mondi on Garfield Avenue, on River Street, George Whiting Paper Company, over on Sixth Street, International Wireworks, Albany International Wireworks, and on and on. And you look at Nina with their huge industrial parks, which are tremendous. And when you look at equalized value, I, I would think that would be more of a fair, the 65-34 split with the city. So, I guess I have some work to do and, and maybe others do. But, and they're growing to the southwest tremendously. They just did another 400 acres and it goes on and on. And granted, we, we have our expansion too, but not, not to this degree. And I would like, I'd, I'll vote for the formula this year because I'm not offering any changes to it, but I think the equalized value is probably a closer number for all of us to look at. And also, on the sewage commission, the, the rate, the rate flow too.
We're not talking about the sewage commission.
Is a good way to compare the differences between the community. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item six is the mutual aid pack. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that the, would that we approve the fire service mutual aid pack extension through December 31st of 2023.
So, motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion?
I do.
You do? Okay, go ahead.
The only thing that I have is that I thought that maybe this would have been good enough for 2022. But this was approved in the Nina-Manash Fire Rescue Committee for this date. I just think it's a little long, but that's just my opinion.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item seven is repairing of engine 32. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought there were two parts to this for some reason. Let me go back. So, at this time, I'll make a motion that, that we do the repair of engine 32's corrosion with the Pierce, including repair replacement of the rear intake pipe, new battery boxes. Okay, so it was all put into one. And new air system with estimated cost of $16,600.
So, motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, the only reason I was a little confused here was that we had several options and I didn't know, got lumped into one motion, so.
And I was just looking at the options and it's $16,900 in the option and $16,600 in the motion. Is there a reason for that, Kevin?
I think it should be the 16,9 with the options and not 16,6.
You make the motion at 16,9?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm sorry, I wrote the, read the wrong number. It was listed 16,6, but the chief informs us that it's 16,9.
Was there a second? I forget. So, there's a motion and a second for the repairs at an estimated cost of $16,900. Discussion, Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The chief, in your memo to us on apparatus repair and replacement, you state that it's been identified with some problematic corrosion issues on other Pierce fire apparatus. And then it goes on to say the corrosion is extreme. And then on, and, under the Nina-Manash Joint Fire Finance and Personnel Committee, it goes on to say that, that findings from other departments, that the 2008 area vendors received a bad batch of metal, the, with the manufacturing received, it's affecting the vehicles in 2008. We're not the only department that this has affected. And then going back to the last time we were buying trucks from Pierce, the problem with it was electrical wiring problems. I had a truck right in front of my house just stop working and the firefighters had to run down the street to get to the fire because the Pierce truck was just shorting out and it just stopping. I never saw where Pierce stood behind that for us on that, on those electrical problems. And now, are they making any type of concessions on this bad metal patch that they got?
I think with the, when they, we did have them come and take a look at it, so I think part of the estimate was doing it at a reduced cost of what it would normally cost the department to have it done. And in the, in, since 2008, they have changed their processes, whatever type of metal they were using and the process when they assembled the truck, they're using some kind of galvanized e-coating now on all their frame and frame rails. So, that's, that was the difference. That's one of those things in 2008 that they, that they found or changed their processes in, so.
Has that brought to our attention than the last five, 10 years that they had a bad batch of metal?
No, this was just recently discovered as we took a look at ours. This had just been, some of the other departments had, at our state chiefs had talked about it, so we had ours, we've been, we took a look at ours and noticed the same thing, so.
Certainly, I think Pierce should give us some sort of a concession for this, you know? And also, it goes on to say about, that we are not, two trucks are both over 7,000 hours. By 7,000 hours, how, how far are they over 7,000 hours?
They're right, both of them happen to be both right at 7,000. I don't know the exact, but they're right at, right there.
And you know, as, every year, technology advances and, and we should be improving the hours. For instance, we used to look at police cars at 60,000 miles, now we're looking at them at 100,000 miles. We used to look at dump trucks that the boxes were rusting out on them and now they've gone to different metals that the boxes don't rust out on them. And even cars get, get much greater life as we move forward. And I'm just wondering with the police, the fire department vehicles, why we're not getting more hours out of those as, as, as technology improves and...
I am not sure. That would be something that we can have Pierce come and talk to the council if you'd like. I have no idea what their processes consist of other than, I guess, that the galvanizing that they do now.
I know with the 7,000 hours, before it was always 15 years and now we've gone to hours versus the 15 years and I don't know where that change came in.
I think most of it came from our mechanics who have, over the few, last few years have, we've asked them to figure out a timeframe when, when the trucks have reached their max use and then still trying to get a decent resale price on them if we sell. So, I, I think it came through mechanics and cost and how many times a certain truck came through with what issue. And so, they've kind of narrowed it down not to miles as much as hours now.
And are they certified, certified mechanics?
They are certified in a lot of the Pierce inspections and things that they can do at Station 35. Now, they don't do every kind of repair on them, but they do the majority of it.
Okay. I worked with a fire chief from Hillburg and every month he got his book on used trucks and it was like his brand-new catalog at Christmas time to look at new trucks and so, and his new trucks were car-used trucks, so I'm just wondering where that 7,000 hours comes in to, to play. And if other truck builders have that same threshold at 7,000 hours. Wisconsin has a tremendous amount of talent as far as building truck, fire trucks and Seagrave's up in Clintonville and there's a few in southern Wisconsin too. And I certainly would like to see three bids on this, on this truck before, before we approve it. And also, I would like to see some sort of a concession from Pierce on this bad batch of metal that they had and, and affecting their equipment. Amy Pierce doesn't make the best truck anymore. I don't know. We had wiring problems where they would just shut down and then we, now we have metal problems, so is it, is it the, the best truck for our dollar? And we should find that out with competitive bids too. And I would appreciate competitive bids on any time we have a, a new truck, which we've had in the past. And it's always good, it's always good to see, see what the other competitors got. I know some departments swear, swear by Seagrave's in New York City, some swear by Pierce and, and LaFrance and other trucks. So, there's, Wisconsin has a great, great number of builders, so I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Pierce makes the best fire trucks in the country. And this is, is to get us through till we need our next truck. What year is this truck?
Get us through, it's due to be replaced in 2024.
Can you imagine? Any reason I asked them this? I knew it was 2008, but I wanted the public to hear that. And now we're just, you know, we're trying to, you know, get by till we buy our new truck. I think this is a deal. And the other great thing is the convenience of where Pierce is located. They're our neighbors. They're just across the river and it's convenient. You save on overtime, you save on mileage. There's so many types of savings that we have and this is a small cost. I know, not to say that $16,000 isn't a lot of money, but when you look at a fire truck and they're running 700 to a million dollars apiece, this is like taking care of a scratch on a vehicle, really. So, I'm very pleased with the trucks that we've received from Pierce and the committee was unanimous on, on their decision about this. And I think the chief is, is trying to save this, both communities some dollars here until we have to get our, our new vehicle.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I would like to just mention, you know, fire truck doesn't put out the fire. When's the last fire we put out? And so, I guess, you know, another thing, Seagrave, it's in Clintonville. How, how convenient, but we just had that issue just before. So, that's all I want to say, the fire truck doesn't put out the fire. So, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
And again, I haven't seen the performance that Pierce claims they have with our trucks. We had to get rid of this, these other trucks in the past and now it's a, a metal problem, so I don't, I don't see that. And I don't know if there's some rating out there, but Clintonville's very close and so are other ones in the state here too. And maybe we just have too much of a cozy, I see a lot of people wearing Pierce shirts. I don't know where the Pierce shirts come from, but you know, it's, it's, we should be looking at the quality. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Clone, the estimated cost of the repairs is $16,600, or $16,900. Is that cost split between both Nina and Manasha and the roughly 60-40 split?
Correct.
So, City of Manasha will have 40% of that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? I think it was that year that we put the fire on the first meeting for the budget too. You're not working, Tom? You want to reset it and try again? You want to reset it and try again? Hope that it went.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item eight and item nine actually go together. One, the certified survey map for eight has to be filed with item nine. So if you wanted to, you could do these two together. If you don't, you can do them separately as well. Is there a motion? You got, you got to turn your mic on, I can't.
I keep forgetting. It's like, we keep going back and forth with how we do stuff. So I'm used to doing the other way. I will make the motion, first off, for the certified survey map, to approve the certified survey map as proposed for the lot line adjustment of 1010 Woodcrest Heights Drive, 7-00848-14, and approximately 45 feet of parcel, 7-00848-00. And then also the, make the approval for the final plot. Recommend the approval for the Woodland Heights final plot as presented, finding that the plot conforms to the municipal ordinance, the city's comprehensive plan, and the surrounding development with the following conclusions, or conditions, I should say, that they show the 80-foot cul-de-sac temporary at the end of Woodcrest Heights and Sandpiper Drive. This should also show a temporary 10-foot easement on lots four and five, and lots 10 and 11. Number two, to add the 10-foot drainage access easement, five foot on each lot between lots 14 and lots 15. And number three, that the certified survey map lot line adjustment of 1010 Woodcrest Heights Drive be recorded prior to the final plot.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Tomgrotty. Is there discussion?
Alderman, Sevenek.
The area where it says 9A, the 80-foot cul-de-sac, temporary, is that understood? That it's temporary? Because the last thing I want to hear is a developer told me that we would never have this cul-de-sac out of here, and I thought we were going to live around the cul-de-sac, kind of thing.
Yep, it will be temporary. List it on there.
I'd like for the minutes to reflect that, that I had asked that question.
There any other, any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Oops, I'm sorry. Alderman, Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if my questions have to do with 9 or 10 at this point. And I'm not exactly sure what, well, let me back up. We had some members of the gallery here this evening talking about the process that is being undertaken at this moment and the transparency of that. And so Director Schrader, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to address that, or if item 10 is, or if both of these items are involved in that particular question.
So these would be two different areas? So it'd be my understanding that the concerns would be from item 10?
Okay.
So this area is north of Gasling? The area in 10 is to the southeast of Gasling?
I, I thought it was 10, but I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Alderman, Repel.
Thank you, Mayor. I know Alderman Sevenek went to the word temporary. Is there a timeframe on the temporary, Sam?
That would be until such a time that that road extended to the north.
The completed road, or just a stone road, or what?
The future platted subdivision north of that plat.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sam, one of those two roads is planned to go up to Manitowoc Road, correct?
Yes, so as you can see on the, the plat that's provided within the packet, there's three lots to the north of here. Lot one of CSM 999, lot two of CSM 999, and lot one of CSM 1955. That is all vacant farmland, basically all the way up to Manitowoc Road. So this would allow future access to those property owners. The developer on this woodland development does not own any of this property to the north. So again, at this time, this would conclude their, their boundary of their development. So basically adding two temporary cul-de-sacs. And then at a future date, if that property owner would ever want to circle back with, with the city of Minasha to look at actually plating that subdivision out, we would begin those conversations at that time.
And those three parcels are in the city?
And those three parcels are in the city.
Does that help everyone? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Okay, item 10. Director Schrader, do you want to start out a little bit about the process and what we're doing here and what the, the next steps are if this does pass this evening?
Certainly. So a planned unit development follows under section 131-33 of our city zoning code. Basically, the review and application procedures are as follow. A pre-application conference within, within staff. Then the application for planner approval after that process, that conference. The application for a PUD may be made in the forms by the community development department. Upon receipt, the application shall be forwarded to the plan commission for review and recommendation. Such recommendations shall be forwarded to the common council within 60 days. Upon written request and approval by the council within 60 days, an additional 60 days may be granted for recommendation. Following that recommendation, further on within the code, it does state the designation, so the official designation of a district. So basically, this is more or less the PUD within, within concept, if you will. The designation of a PUD district. So if the common council approves the PUD plan, basically what is in front of us today, then the lands may be designated as a PUD district in accordance to the rezoning procedures described in this code. So again, if approved today, following this, the, the application then would go into the rezoning process. So at that point, there would be a public hearing, an informal public hearing at the city plan commission, as well as a formal public hearing at the common council. Both the, the property owners within 100 feet of that boundary would get notified. We would put out signs, as was approved by our, our policy of the, of the public hearing notice, as well as mail notices out to, to any municipality within 1,000 feet and provide notice within the, within the paper. So again, basically, upon approval of the PUD, we go right back through the official rezoning process.
And then the other half is the plat itself?
So yes. So I guess beyond the actual PUD as well as the, the rezoning, this does also require, because we are looking at a new subdivision, it does require an actual preliminary plat, as well as a final plat, similar to what we just did. So those preliminary plats would get submitted to the city plan commission, forwarded to the common council. Upon approval, we would go back to the plan commission for the final plat, and then that would go through both plan commission as well as the common council. In addition to that, typically, within the city of Minasha, we do offer the deferred assessment. So we basically offer to, to reimburse the costs of the infrastructure within a development agreement to be paid back upon, upon lot sales or a time to be determined. All of that has yet to come to the plan commission or the common council. So those items will be coming in the future.
Okay. I don't know if that answered everyone's questions, but we'll move on to Alderman, Taylor, at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, Director Sam, we heard from the public that at the last planning commission, they weren't properly notified. Is that true?
As, as just noted, it was not true.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman, Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. In listening to those folks this evening, what I'm hearing is the struggle is, we get so far into the process. We have this, and I, I know there's signs out there already, so I'm not sure if he's digging already. But there's a construction entrance sign and those sorts of things. There must be some activity going out there. Obviously, the residents have heard some things about to happen out there. And we get this far into the process where we're starting to see things on the agenda, Woodlake cottages, planned use, planned unit development. And the neighboring property owners get notified when it comes to rezoning for the project. So typically in that situation, there's already a development agreement. We've passed that point. We have one of those already? We do not, because this is a little bit different process. And then the rezoning happens. It's, it feels like it happens later on in the process. When things are already moving along, there's activity and all of that. So I think that's where the frustration comes in. So can you help us understand why the process is the way it is? Why doesn't the rezoning take place first, where people are notified and able to talk about that before we're talking about preliminary plats and plating out properties?
Certainly. So basically, this is the process that was determined by the, the city council. If we would like to revisit this in the future, where a PUD would require a public hearing, I'm sure, certainly staff can confer with the city attorney to see what that would require. But basically, this is the process that we, that we did follow. There's likely, with this circumstance, there's likely more activity than, than would typically happen if it was a blanket subdivision. And the reason being is that the developer that's looking at this future development actually purchased, or has an agreement to purchase, the 19 lots that was platted last year. So that 19 lots, those were already in the works to be basically standard R1, single-family lots, residential lots. This developer approached Mr. Haggins about acquiring this, as well as the original 19 lots. So they actually purchased, I believe this past March, nine of those 19 lots, basically to kind of get a, a jumpstart on development, because they would like to move through this process very quickly. And I state that as in, when, upon approval, they're, they're already marketing and they're ready to kind of hit the ground running. So that's likely why you're seeing the construction. Now, from their standpoint, if the PUD or the rest of the development does not get approved, they are still legal single-family houses that can move forward in the same fashion. So they can just be sold as a regular single-family house. So there's really not a whole lot of risk, I guess, to the developer to, to be building these spec houses at this time, because again, they, they are able to, they are legal houses. They meet all of our regular standard regulations and can then move forward. But it does provide them the ability to, to really start to market the, the area for, for future development. They have kind of stated that it is their goal that they'd be almost sold out with under five years. So again, that, that is a pretty quick turnaround for the, for the number of houses that we are looking at here. So, and I do want to know that because our, we've, we have had conversations with these certain property owners, we did send courtesy emails to them because we actually did have that, basically informing them of the plan commission meeting. So again, those were done, and we have had conversations with them throughout the summer about this process.
If the developer had chosen a process outside of a PUD, a planned unit development, would this process look and feel different?
There would be, similar to the plat that we just had looked at. If it was an R1 zoning district, so the lots were, well, the lots, they actually, the lots meet the, the standard minimum lot size for an R1 single-family district. The, the only thing is the size of the house that they're looking at actually constructing here, as well as some of the side setbacks within that, that subdivision and the community room. If it didn't have those, those items, we could go through the preliminary plat process as well as the final plat process. There would be no public hearing notice. There would be no notice to, in the paper. There would be none of those, similar to what we've seen on the, the past plat that came through, as it's not required to notify at all.
So, so in other words, what I'm hearing is because it's a planned use, a planned unit development, there will be a public hearing process?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, once we get to that process, we're talking about rezoning to move forward? And it's at that point that members of the community would be able to weigh in and express their support or opposition to the process? And then what happens after that?
Yes, certainly. So, but again, they, because of the public comment periods within the agenda, they are, provided that opportunity to speak at any point. The, the steps that, if approved tonight, the steps that would still need to take place are a rezoning, a preliminary plat, a final plat. All three of those items would have to go through the city plan commission, as well as the common council. And then a development agreement between the city of Minasha, as well as, and Atkins Development Group for the, the deferred assessment within the infrastructure. So that would go through the administration committee, as well as the common council.
Yes, but it's with the rezoning portion, portion, that a public hearing is initiated and property owners are notified and a sign is placed, or multiple signs, notifying of zoning changes.
Correct.
And so then, my question is, when that public hearing happens and community members come to express their support or opposition to the project, then what happens? Does, does the city go back and work with the developer to work some of those things out? Does the developer contact residents? What?
That, that's up to the, the committee and the common council to determine how to move forward with that.
And the plan commission?
The, the committee, yeah, the plan commission, yes.
And do you know offhand when that policy was established by the common council for the process?
I do not.
Okay. I'll follow up with that. Thank you.
Alderman, Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just, so everyone understands regardless. I mean, what we're looking at tonight is looking at Atkins Development, future plans for Woodland Lake cottages, developing a planned unit development. If we said, no, we don't want that, regardless, the area is going to be developed. So, so people have to understand, regardless, the area is going to be developed. And I promised myself I wasn't going to say anything, but I think I owe it to the, the folks that are here today. Your dispute should not really be with us. Your dispute should be with the guy who told you those things, and I'm not going to use his name, but I agree with everything you had said before, because I've been around the block up here before, and you're not the first group of people to come up here and say things about this particular developer. And I'm not talking about Atkins. So that, I, I, I feel bad that that kind of garbage happens. And it's a, it's one of the most beautiful areas of the city of Minasha. And I can understand you're not wanting to see houses that aren't as, probably as beautiful as yours. But Minasha needs to grow. We are looking at the possibility of a $50 million development. We have no other way to pay our people and provide services in this community unless the city of Minasha grows. And we can't do that anymore because townships around here, that we gave them sewer and water and everything else as our future growth area, has decided that we don't want to be a part of Minasha. We're going to go on their own. And I can understand their point, too. But that's not what it was designed for. So we are now landlocked, and all we can do is either grow what we have and grow up. have and grow up. So I guess I'll just leave it at that. The area's going to get developed. And from the drawings in that I've seen, I think it looks nice. I hope it turns out nice. My sister recently went to Arizona looking for a place just like this, and the HOS fees were more than I ever paid on my home. So, and they don't, and this was in Arizona, and they don't even plow snow. So anyways, hopefully everyone has a better understanding of this. I really, I really understand the people that live out there, how they feel, but I can't emphasize it enough, the area's going to grow out there. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you for coming.
Alderman Repel.
Thank you, Mayor. So Sam, bottom line is, those 19 lots, those will be built on, no matter what, as far as, because those were bought, purchased by Hagens, correct? Those 19 lots? And after that, it's open to discussion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're sitting there. You will see construction on those 19 lots, and then, depending on how we move forward in the next two months, whether there's any more construction versus, in addition to those 19 lots. Correct, Sam?
Correct. And again, as noted, if the PUD is denied, it can all still be constructed as standard, single-family residential.
Right, the 19 lots.
And the remaining vacant.
And the remainder.
Provided, again, the preliminary plat and the final plat are approved.
Okay. So I thank Corey and his group for coming, and Alderman Sevigny had some good ideas or comments. I also feel bad that they had to deal with a developer that wasn't honest to them. Unfortunately, you guys are paying the price for his dishonesty. So I'm going to, I'm going to side with my people here. I know that they, it's dishonest, but I understand where I'm going to vote. So, thank you.
So at this point, we do not have a motion on the floor. Would someone like to make a motion? Alderman Schmidt?
I would like to make the motion to approve the planned unit development as presented for Atkins Development Group LLC for the future Woodland Lakes cottages subdivision, and direct the applicant to submit the necessary preliminary plat rezoning materials for approval with the following conditions/exceptions. Number one, that section 9.4, excluding the facade, the face, the site plan shall be reviewed and approved by the City Planning Commission following section 13-1-12 of the zoning code following the R1 standards. Number two, that the treatment of the building setback of the West property line of lots 171 and 172, abutting existing residential, shall meet the R1 single-family residential standards. And number three, that any, that all other regulations not specifically exempt within the PUD shall default to the R1 zoning codes.
There's a motion by Alderman Schmidt, and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Any further discussion? Seeing...
Just one last thing. Thank you, Mayor. This vote, however it turns out, this is just one initial step. Things still can be, this is not, everything is all passed and good. So this is just a small step. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven, one.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of August 13th through November, or September 2nd, 2021, in the amount of $2,202,893.61.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item two is the beverage operators' license applications. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2021 through 2023 licensing period, as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated September 2nd, 2021.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please? Hey, Sam, do you want to pass the microphone
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item three is a portable radio upgrades update. Chief Steika, I saw you shaking your head, no, but, oh, is it not working? There we go. You'd just like to give us an update on this, and then the council can make their determination as to what they'd like to do?
Certainly. We brought up, as part of the CIP workshops that the council had over the past couple sessions, that one of the things that we were putting in the budget was the upgrade of the radio system. I won't go back through, I know there was some discussion as to the why we need the hardware replacement. I don't know the specific particulars, but it ended up happening with Motorola and our local service provider, Baycom. But when we put together our numbers for the CIP, it was done in good faith, based upon the estimates that Baycom had given us at that time. Subsequently, Motorola then did about a 5% increase, and my speculation is that upset a number of the customers that, like us, were in a planning phase as to getting additional equipment. So Motorola ended up coming back and saying that they would give a 5% discount, in essence, making the price back to the same as what it was prior to the price increase, if places would make an order by December 31st, or, I'm sorry, December 15th. Well, Baycom took it one step further, and said that they would honor the original price quote if we would act upon it by the 15th, and pass along the discount that Motorola was offering for the products that we were looking at purchasing. The net difference of what we'd be looking at is about $10,000. So if we wait, and if it would be approved as part of next year's budget, we would just have to get our order in by December 15th, but it would be about $10,000 more. If we wouldn't make any purchase, then that full, no discount would apply, the original quote that was given to us wouldn't apply, and it would be about $10,000 more if we wait until 2022, if the city would go and purchase the portable radios. So, I'll say at the onset, this, I know the council gets upset when things are given to them at a very last moment, and I couldn't agree with you more. So if, the concept is tonight, because of that, have at it. I just felt the obligation, the responsibility, to pass this along to you, that we had an opportunity to save anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000, depending on when the, if a purchase would be approved, when that purchase would be made. So with that, that's kind of the high-level thing I can certainly answer, or try to answer any questions you may have.
Alderman Sevigny?
I'd like to make a motion. Are we looking at a dollar figure of $206,702.99?
That is correct.
I'll make the motion that we purchase these radios to obtain the discount and use the money from the ARPA funding. And you want...
Second. There's a motion, a second. Further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Steika, could you, what the motion reads is that we would be allocating $206,702.99, and that's if we purchased the radios by September 15th. Am I correct on that?
Putting the order in by September 15th, correct.
Okay. And if we waited till December 15th, after the 2022 budget was approved, what would the cost be then?
It would be approximately, well, if you did in that next timeframe where Motorola was offering that 5% discount, it would be about $216,000, which is kind of what we were originally planning on.
Okay. And given that it's now September, do you have an idea of where the police department budget might finish for this year, and if there might be funds from this 2021 budget that we could allocate towards this purchase?
Still very preliminary. My estimates are anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000 on the low end, to maybe $100,000 on the high end of a surplus, as we were down some positions earlier this year.
Okay. Today's September 7th, so that's eight days from the 15th. Given your preliminary estimates, and this could be a question for you or for Director Sassman, what is the comfort level on allocating some funds from the police department budget towards the
The general fund, so I wouldn't be comfortable making that decision right now, at least not in total.
Okay, I appreciate that. What if the decision was, or the purchase was postponed to that December 15th deadline? What would the comfort level be then?
But then we'd be looking at the $10,000 more.
I know, but what would the comfort level be?
I'd be more comfortable with that.
Okay. The reason, the reason for the question is because these are funds, essentially, that were granted to us by the federal government to use for specific purposes, which, one of my questions for the chief was how this purchase actually fits into those guidelines, and I forgot to ask that question of him, but I can circle back. And I feel strongly that we should do everything we can to extend those funds as much as possible. So one way to do that is to provide matching funds from the general fund. Or another way would be to borrow for some of it, but I don't want to do that. So providing matching funds is a way to extend those dollars and maximize any other investments that we choose to make as a city. And for us to be able to do that, it, everyone, the finance director would be more comfortable to do that, place that order on December 15th, instead of September 15th. And in order for us to maximize those funds, that $10,000 is worth spending, to me. What is the lifetime of the radios, Chief Steika? Expected lifetime of the new radios?
About, somewhere between five to seven.
Five to seven years, Chief Steika said. Thank you. So that's where I'm coming from, and if we could revisit this in December, then we can have an opportunity to provide some matching funds.
I'm sorry you just passed the microphone back, but Director Sassman, we allocate, we allocate about $200,000 from our general fund every year towards our budget. So that means we need to come in about $200,000 over bud, under budget, to not use any of our undesignated reserve.
Correct.
And the estimates that we're getting right now is, it's likely that we're going to more or less hit that 200 or less.
Right. Like I said, I really have to take all of the departments that are in the general fund, look at them collectively.
Yeah. We don't, we don't have a final number yet, but, but we think it's going to be very close to that 200. There's not going to be a lot in addition to that, if any. So by doing that, we're probably taking that money from our undesignated reserve.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood how we budgeted, and why we try to come in about $200,000 under budget every year. The next person was Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Back to the chief, sorry. I think I should make a motion that we use ARPA funds to buy three more microphones.
Why don't we, in the meantime, why don't we do this, grab the other?
The department head can communicate with us.
We're off topic here.
In the future. Chief, each officer has their own personal radio, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, do they each carry a cellphone?
No.
Nope. And they have a computer in the car that they communicate how? With dispatch or?
They do receive their calls from a computer in the car for the patrol officers, not investigators, school resource officers, or other staff.
Okay. And so if they all have their personal radio, why do we need a radio in the vehicle? Just asking the question.
Sure. Couple different things. So the radio, well, the way that it works right now is the radio system that we have inside the vehicles has a bit more capabilities than what our portable radios end up having. It transmit for a, over a larger area. It, so, some of the places that we go are obviously within our coverage area, but there can be circumstances such as transporting a person that goes out of the general area. The portable radios don't have as much of a capability for that transmitting purpose. Plus, there's different bands that you start looking at. And for example, and one of the reasons why the transition is fairly important, is we cannot communicate with Calhoun County. So, except right now, in our patrol vehicles, because they're on a different radio system than what Appleton and Outagami and the rest of Winnebago County is on. So, the short answer is, there's different capabilities with each, and the other thing is, these are battery-operated. Depending on the battery life, you can get 12 to maybe 16 hours of use out of it, and if it isn't charged by that point, then you would not have that radio communication.
Okay. And I appreciate you bringing this to us, to have a $10,000 savings, and I appreciate Alderman Nichols' input on this, too, and our finance director, Jennifer, for that, too. Thanks for bringing this up at this time.
Good.
And thanks for the explanation on the radios. Somebody told me that every officer has a cellphone.
They might want one, but, no, the only ones that have, we have one in each of the patrol vehicles, then the investigative staff have cellphones in the SROs.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'm sure every officer has their own personal cellphone, but anyways, and I understand where Alderman Nichols is coming from, but when the mayor called me about this, if this council remembers, I made the statement, I don't want to see these funds going towards just police radios. I want to see something physical. I'm sure Tom remembers that, because Tom and I have talked about things that these funds could be used for. But when you, when you come across an opportunity to save a large sum of money, I think we need to jump on this. We're doing it regardless. We're literally talking a couple of months from now. So why not save some dollars, get... So why not save some dollars, get these in? I, I'm sure it's not going to be wham bam and you're going to have them in the mail the next day. So I, and I also, thank you, Jennifer, for your comments. Mike, I'm always concerned about our undesignated reserve. We're always kind of tittering on that. And we've done a very good job of the past couple of years with, with that fund and keeping it up there. You know, at some point, things aren't going to be so honky dory where we can just go out and find dollars for under one and a half, 2%. And we're going to have to get our bond rating back up. And one major thing that organizations like Moody's look at is how we handled our undesignated reserves. So I think we should vote for this. I've already talked too much tonight, and let's vote for this.
Any other discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Steika, I just want to circle around with that question because as the American Rescue Plan was laid out to us, I questioned how this purchase of police radios fits into those four categories that were presented to us. And so could you explain that, please?
Sure. So the original thing, and don't quote me on it, I am certainly not an ARPA expert by any means, but one of the original four criteria was dealing with the pandemic and, and whatnot with it. And while there, there is a loose tie to that, and as we had discussed a few weeks ago, we had a flu clinic or a vaccine clinic in the city where some protesters had showed up for, and we had to deal with some things with, with that. So that and some of the quarantine orders, some things that we've dealt and worked with hand in hand with the health department throughout the pandemic is kind of one of the ties on that. The other one that actually came up though is because of the violence that has taken part in, unfortunately not the level that it has in the bigger cities, President Biden ended up putting out additional criteria which would supplement the use of the ARPA funds. And the one that is applicable that we believe from the guidance that we've gotten from others is the investing in technology and equipment to allow law enforcement to more efficiently and effectively respond to the use in gun violence resulting from the pandemic. There's two things to really think about that. It's not just the gun violence that takes place that you read about in the newspaper, but it's also the gun violence that we see in the community from suicide. And very unfortunately, we had two gun-related suicides in the city of Manasha last week alone. So fortunately, we are not seeing the other types of crime associated with guns in the Fox Valley, but the suicides and the mental health issues that we've seen throughout the pandemic sadly do happen here in Manasha as well as other communities in the Fox Valley.
Thank you for sharing that. And you, no, I'm almost sorry, I asked my question because that's just sad. You mentioned the directive from the president about allowing these funds to be used towards funds, towards ways that will help police better combat violent crime?
Yeah, so I was just reading the quote from that, that section of the release, "to efficiently and effectively respond to the rise in gun violence," doesn't say crime, "but violence resulting from the pandemic."
Yes, thank you.
You bet.
And crime and violence are two very different things. And thank you for bringing this opportunity forward. I completely understand why you did it because it's an opportunity to save money. And it was something that was briefly discussed at a workshop that was held recently outside of the public view on ways to spend the ARPA dollars, 1.8 million. And I'm actually going to vote against this tonight for a couple of reasons. The, the purchase of the radios is planned for, and it's in the budget. And it's in the budget for 2022, the one we're working on right now. So that's a planned purchase, one that the city's prepared for and that we've known about for a long time. And while I completely respect the needs of the police department and the work that they do, I'm very concerned that we don't have a plan for these funds and we're not taking the time to plan and discuss the, the best ways to invest these dollars in our community. This is, to me, an impulse buy at this moment. It's kind of like we're a kid in a candy store with a pocket full of money, looking around, what, what kind of candy do we want and how am I going to spend every penny that's in my pocket? And I think that we really need to have careful and thoughtful conversation about the west, the best ways to invest these dollars and investments in ways that re, returns for many years to come in our community. So it's for those reasons that I'm choosing to vote against this particular item this evening.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to wait until December to make sure we're over or under budget. Playing with this money, it's not really, well, it's, it's our money, but it's not the taxpayers' money. And if we go over budget on certain other things and we have to put it as part of our budget, then it goes on the taxpayers' money. We did get a $1.8 million. This is a very small amount of that 1.8. It's something that's going to be done whether or not. So I will vote yes to have this funding approved to help the, our Manasha Police Department with the portable, portable radio updates.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven, one.
Item four is the fee for the influenza vaccine, and the recommendation should have been from the Manasha Board of Health, not the Manasha Health Department. Is there a motion? We, we have done it in the past. There is not a council member on the Board of Health. That's why it comes to the council in this direction. And I think Christine said last year or two years ago, we did this as well. There, there was a change in fee a couple of years back. Alderman Nichols?
I'll move to set the fee for the influenza vaccine at $20 as recommended by the Manasha Board of Health.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenet?
The fee, no. So, I mean.
So the, I don't know if Christine wants to, do you have the mic back there?
My, my whole point was, is this, is this, you know, during this time with our health crisis, the way it is, is it really going to make a big difference that we have to increase the fee here for our citizens here? I, I don't think it's needed.
I can, I mean, I can.
Are we subsidizing a little bit here or what's the situation?
Um, I did put together.
Are we taking staff time and all that?
Yeah, I did. So right now, our vaccine costs 17, excuse me, $17.
Yep.
We did do an analysis of the cost that it takes, you know, to administer the vaccine. The vaccine itself this year costs just shy of $17 itself for us to purchase the vaccine. And then we have all the supplies that go along with it, gloves, needles, sharps, containers, alcohol, Band-Aids, you know, you, you name it. So that's where we got that estimate of the $20 would kind, would ultimately cover the cost of the vaccine and all of the supplies included, and a very small portion of the staff time that would be, that is needed to run the clinics.
Is this mostly covered by insurance when people come? Or is this just our cost? Because I know I could go to, like Randy was just telling me, he got, oh, if that's medical information I can share or not, but he told me he went and got a flu shot and it didn't cost him anything because.
They billed his insurance.
They billed his insurance and.
Yep. So, you know, pharmacies do have that ability to bill insurance. They, for us, we take care of the Manasha, City of Manasha employees, the school district employees, utilities employees, and we send their HR departments their, the bill. So this is for people who come in and do not present insurance for us.
Okay. I will say that, and maybe it was three years ago, I was trying to get into City Hall and people wouldn't let me in because they said, get in line. And I went, what? What's going on here? And the line literally was from the health department's door out to the parking lot.
For the clinic?
For the clinic, yeah.
We do see a lot of people.
All righty. I, I don't know if it's necessary, but like, like I'm hearing it's $3, but some people, that's difficult.
Christine, I, I think that you said you checked other pharmacies as well and were a little less than most of the other areas?
Yeah, I couldn't find all the 2021 numbers, but the ones that I did find, it was approximately $40 per dose. Someone would have to pay out of pocket if they did not have insurance that was billable.
All right. So I guess we're significantly lower then?
Yes.
Any other discussion still?
Sorry.
Okay. If we have no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item L is appointments. We have two appointments for Park and Rec. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move to counsel, the mayor's reapportment of Lisa Hopwood and Brian Odessio to the Park and Rec Board for the term of 10-1, 2021 through 09-30 of 2024.
So motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Did you have discussion, Ted, or? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item N is public comment and any matter on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment at this time? No? Mr. Rourke, did you want to comment at this time? Sure. We're going to have to put the mic back now. Doesn't matter.
I understand I missed the public comment period. I understand during this part of the meeting, I'm only supposed to address agenda items. I would, I was a few minutes late. I apologize for that. I would like to ask for an exemption, just to give me two minutes to update the city on where we left the conversation back at a common council meeting in June, if that's all right.
There any objections?
Thank you very much. May I proceed? Okay. Yeah, I arrived back in Manasha in June of this year to continue and complete my work, to fulfill my obligations to the City of Manasha and the citizenry of Manasha. I've been here since that first week in June. My wife joined me for six weeks. She left to go back on August the ninth, and I leave tomorrow morning, tomorrow noon, excuse me. I was scheduled to leave two weeks ago, but I decided to delay my departure so that I could stand before you tonight. I've had, thank you. I've had a lot of meetings since we last spoke with possible tenants that would go in the building. I have identified one. Once I get back to New York, I'm going to send them over some preliminary talking terms to see if we can get the right agreement in place that they will have another tenant in 140 Main Street. I've had multiple meetings between companies from Milwaukee, Madison, up to Appleton that are in the photography and videography space about actually forming a television and film production company and putting that on the third floor of 140 Main Street. That is my ultimate goal. I have partnered with a company out here and we formed a new company, Hoffman Development Group, so I have a business out here. I have a reason to be here. I need to create a reason for my wife to be out here so that I'm not out here six months and I only see her one month when she comes out here, when she's not performing in New York City. I've enjoyed my summer in Manasha. I've participated in a lot of activities. I've been to a lot of events. Just this past weekend, the Jazz Festival in Jefferson Park. I met the art director, Harmon, and Janet Planet, and met a lot of those people. So I've agreed to sponsor that event next year. That's really all I wanted to say. I've, I love Manasha, I love Wisconsin. I was born on a farm, I was born and raised in Georgia, raised on a farm. Valdosta, Georgia, population about 60,000 people. But I live just outside the city in the county, unincorporated Dasher, Dasher, which is about the size of Hilbert, 1,000 people. So this, for me, living, working, playing in Wisconsin is like a homecoming to me. And that's because I can't go home. My father sent me a cease and desist letter. I broke his heart when I left the farm and moved to New York City. I crossed the Mason Dixon line. I became a Yankee. I moved to Sin City. I worked on Wall Street, which was criminal activity in his mind to steal money from moms and pops and grandparents. So in 1987, when I graduated university and moved to New York City, my father literally disowned me. He wanted nothing to do with me. The day, as soon as my mother passed away, he sent me a cease and desist letter. Do not call me, do not write me, do not drive by my house, do not call the neighbors and ask about my health or my well-being. You are dead to me. So ever since I received that letter from my father, knowing I could not go home to Georgia, I've been looking for my next home in the country. And I want to be a gentleman farmer in Wisconsin with a sharecropper because I can't, I can't be out here 12 months a year. But that is why I'm here. And someone asked me today, you're from Georgia, you've got projects across the country, you live in New York City, why are you in Manasha? And that's why. A friend invited me out for a visit. I bought a building. I'm in the process of redeveloping that. It's been slower than I planned, but every commercial real estate project in Manasha has had delays. I apologize for that. I am embarrassed about that. But it, every decision that I make monetarily has to make economic sense. And I will continue to do whatever I have to do and spend as much time out here as I have to to complete that building and do other projects. That's all I wanted to say. I think my five minutes is up.
Yeah, you're about four and a half, so you're pretty close.
I wish you could ask me questions, but you know, I don't, maybe you can make an exception to that as well. Yeah. Yes, I'm, seriously, I feel like this is a, is a homecoming, a second home. I've spent six months here last year. I'll be six months this year, six months next year. If I can get this television and film production company going, I've already, I'm already working with Tim Rays on Dodie Island, you probably know even, looking for a house on Dodie Island. I mean, I've talked to my wife about making this perhaps our permanent residence and giving up New York City. How about that? She's a, she's an actor. Some people say actress. Shakespearean trained, I'm sorry, Tom, I know you don't like Shakespeare. She's Shakespearean trained. She spent two summers up in Lenox, Massachusetts, one of the best training institutes in the country. We, we used to summer in western Massachusetts. It's about a four and a half hour drive. We can be here on a four and a half hour plane flight. It's the same difference. So we shifted our summers from western Massachusetts to Manasha. It's that simple. She? No, we're, we're, we're trying to set up television and film production studio out here. Yeah, I'm already working with the proper government officials in Madison to have reinstated the television and film tax credits. That's the equity that goes into a project. Those were canceled back when Johnny Depp had that disastrous film in Wisconsin. The producer made wonderful promises to the state. The state gave him tax credits. They made the film, they left, they didn't fulfill their obligation, so the state canceled the state, the tax credit program. I'm working to get that reinstated so that we can make some television and film projects out here. Fair enough? I know I'm over my five minutes now.
Well, now you probably are, but anyhow, thank you and safe travels back.
All right, thank you all. I'll see you in a few months or a couple of months. I'll see you in a few months or a couple of months.
Final item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.